Welcome, everybody. My name is Wayne Kazmercheck. I'm the superintendent of White Bear Schools and it's my pleasure to welcome you here tonight as we recognize four different groups of athletes. We have bowling team members, we have adapted soccer team members, we have unified bowling team members, and we have a diver here tonight. So to kick us off, I'd like to welcome Dr. Allison Gillespie, Principal at North Campus, to start us with the bowling team.
Good evening. I'm excited to be here to honor our student athletes. Congratulations to the following students who represented the district in the state bowling tournament. If we could have the parents or family members of Casey and Erin stand to be recognized And then we'll have you guys come back to get a picture with our board members.
So we're gonna do two pictures, three versions. If we can do one with you guys with the school board, and then if we can do one of just you two together, that would be awesome. And if we can kind of smoosh here together, perfect. And then if you just want to make sure you can see me so I can see you, perfect. There we go. There we go. Okay, I'm gonna do one right here. One, two, three, cheese. Don, do you want to be in there?
You want to be?
There you go. Yeah, perfect. Sorry. Okay, there we go. One, two, three, cheese. And then if any parents want to get any, did you get yours?
I did.
Okay, perfect. And then if I could just get two, one of you, one of you guys together. And if you guys just want to step kind of this way, there we go. That's fine, it's long, there we go. One, two, three, cheese. Awesome. And if you need to look at your teeth, thank you.[123.25][123.25][applause]
So each student tonight will be getting a certificate and then a bear pin, which is a very special honor that they'll get from our board members. Our next athletes are our adapted soccer team. Congratulations to the following students who represented the district in the state level adapted soccer competition. Tavis Dean.[168.81][168.81][applause] Cole Kroll.[196.81][196.81][applause] Annie Mernine.[230.12][230.12][applause] Mikey Parnell.[235.81][235.81][applause] Alex Stenin.[241.73][241.73][applause] Jaden Yates.[253.81][253.81][applause] Assistant Coach Abby Olson.[260.41][260.41][applause] Assistant Coach Nikki Schnerpel Edstrom.[267.31][267.31][applause] And Head Coach Joe Dustin.[274.58][274.58][applause] If our family members and parents of these athletes can please stand to be recognized Okay, students and coaches, we'll have you come back in front to get your picture taken with the school board members.
If you guys just want to make a couple of rows, that would be great so we can see everybody.
Oh, one to the row. Mikey, go behind.
If you want to step in the back row, like back, yeah, perfect. There you go. Yeah, thank you so much. If we can keep kind of smooshing in here, even do, would you not come into the front row? Perfect. That'd be great. There we go. Okay, let's see, I might have to really back up a little bit.
Hey, squeeze in and I can help you.
Yep, and then, okay, perfect, I can see you now. Okay, good, I'm ready. Ready, here we go, one, two, three, cheese. Perfect, I'll get out of the way for any parents who are gonna pick some with everyone. And then if I could get one of just the students after. Perfect. And then if I can do one of just the students so if school board members can step aside, and then if we just want to, could we even come in a little bit closer? Yeah, perfect. Perfect. There we go. Oh, yeah, that's awesome. For sure. Scott, can I just scoot over a little bit? Sorry, sorry, sorry. Thank you. Perfect, there we go. Okay, well, look right here, one, two, three, cheese. And then I'm gonna step out of the way for parents, thank you.
I now invite my colleague, White Bear Lake Area High School South Campus Principal Don Bosch, to the podium to recognize the rest of our students being recognized this evening.
Thank you, Allison. I have the honor to recognize our unified bowling team first. Congratulations to the following students who represented the district in the state unified bowling tournament. Isabel Boar.[494.02][494.02][applause] Michael Jacobson.[539.82][539.82][applause] Zachary Jennings.[545.11][545.11][applause] Riley Keigho.[557.87][557.87][applause] Jeffrey Parnell.[563.20][563.20][applause] Is it Annie? Coach Janel Christ.[626.94][626.94][applause] Coach Mark DeFlorin.[634.51][634.51][applause] Coach Misty Gilbertson.[640.41][640.41][applause] And Coach Lee Schurfheim.[647.16][647.16][applause] Parents in the audience, please stand to be recognized as well, too.
If you can also have a picture, that would be awesome. If you can make a couple rows, that'd be good because there's a lot of awesome students here. Perfect. Dustin, Justin, Jeff, Beth, and Amy. Dustin, sorry, Dustin. Dustin, Dustin, you heard. Where are you gonna stand? We had Dustin's right. Yes, perfect, if we can keep them, there we go. There, I can see there, there, that's good. Okay, perfect. Okay, if you could just hold the per view, I can see it perfectly, and then one, two, three, cheese. I'm gonna take a few, and then I'm gonna step out of the way for any parents or friends. And then if I can get a picture of the students and the coaches, that'd be great. Thank you. Perfect. Do you guys maybe even, what if we make like another row over here so we're a little bit more, there we go. Oh, perfect, yes, perfect. There we go. Awesome, perfect. Okay, are we ready? One, two, three, cheese. Awesome, I'm gonna get out of the way again, thank you.
All right, I also have the honor to recognize one of our White Bear Lake Area High School dive team members. Very special honor. Congratulations to the following student who broke a 21-year-old diving record at White Bear Lake Area High School, Hannah Wickstrom.[822.01][822.01][applause] And if Hannah's parents are in the audience, please stand to be recognized as well.[840.32][840.32][applause]
A little bit of a smaller group this time. Perfect. Awesome. There we go, you got them there? Okay, here we go, one, two, three, cheese. A few other girls. Perfect, and if I could just get one of just you, that'd be awesome. Sorry, no, do it somewhere.
Congratulations to all team members this evening. I will turn it over to Dr. Kazmercheck for a few closing remarks.
Very few. Thank you for coming. There are, I think there are some cookies in the back yet, yep. So if you, you need to eat those or the adults will have to eat them otherwise. So the regular meeting starts at seven. Board members and other administrators will be here to visit with you if you wish. Thank you for coming and congratulations to all of you.[920.01][920.01][applause]
Call to order, Independent School District 624. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mullin.
Here.
Newmaster.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Beloit.
Here.
Chapman.
Here.
Allison.
Here.
Fahy.
Here.
Okay, would you all please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, so before us, we've got an agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Allison, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Newmaster. This is all in favor of approving the agenda for this evening, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The ayes have and we have an agenda. Also before us, we have a consent agenda, and under the consent agenda is sundry items that go on in typical meetings. One of them that we are always thankful for is the generosity of the community in the way of donations and gifts, and this month is no exception. Several donations for the play that we had with Mama Mia, scholarship fund, food drive donations, we're very thankful. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Beloit, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Chapman. This will require a roll call vote.
Mullin.
Aye.
Newmaster.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Beloit.
Aye.
Chapman.
Aye.
Allison.
Aye.
Fahy.
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have and we have a consent agenda. At this point, this is where we accept public comment regarding school board matters. I know that there's a public hearing now down in the agenda that we will also accept public comment under the public hearing, but is there anybody that'd like to come and speak regarding public comment about things on the agenda or regarding board issues? Okay, seeing none, we will move into our first informational item, C1, which is our legislative priorities. Is that Dr. Kazmercheck?
That's right. Thank you, Chair Mullin, members of the board. So in the board packet, I've included AMSD's platform, the Association of Metropolitan School Districts. So their platform heading into this next legislative session, and I wanted to highlight a few of those things that most directly relate to White Bear Lake Area schools. First of all, I want to preface my comments on the specific priorities with a portion of what was written in their platform. So their platform is titled "Ensuring an Equitable and Excellent Education for All." So bear with me as I read just a couple of paragraphs here. Minnesota's future prosperity and ability to compete in the global economy is directly tied to successfully closing our racial and economic opportunity and achievement gaps while accelerating achievement for all students. Over the next two decades, millions of baby boomers throughout the nation will retire and leave the workforce, creating an unprecedented number of job openings. The looming workforce shortage comes as Minnesota and the nation are experiencing a major demographic transition. While just 6% of our oldest residents aged 65 and over are people of color, 31% of Minnesota's youngest residents aged 0 to 4 are children of color. And in White Bear Lake Area schools, about 27% of our students are students of color. The number of students eligible for English learner and special education services has risen significantly in recent years. The number of students living in poverty is at a record high, and we have a growing number of homeless students. At the same time, Minnesota has significant racial and income-based disparities in employment, healthcare, homeownership, and educational outcomes. It is imperative that we eliminate these racial and economic gaps and ensure every student graduates from high school ready for college or career. Attaining this goal will require bold leadership and additional resources not currently provided by the state. It will also require that state policymakers and educators do things differently and think creatively with a bold leadership that was previously a Minnesota hallmark. So specifically, I just want to highlight a couple of things under destabilized funding. So much of our funding is based on the formula allowance, and so we would like to see that increased by 3% and then indexed to inflation going forward. The last couple of sessions, we've seen that increase at 2%. Increase special education funding to lower the state portion of the cross subsidy by 50% over the next four years. White Bear Lake's cross subsidy, so the amount that comes from the general fund to support students with special needs is in the 10 million as of fiscal '17 and approaching 12 million in fiscal '18. So that's a real issue for us. Also, there are discrepancies in the way special education is funded, so some districts receive somewhere in the neighborhood of 70% reimbursement, others under 50%. We happen to be one of those districts that is under that 50% threshold. Index local optional revenue to account for geographic wage differentials. This was the idea when this local optional revenue came into place, but then it changed so that everyone throughout the state got the same amount. The original idea was that districts in the metro area have higher costs of labor, for example, so that, the idea is that this local optional revenue would be indexed based on geographic region. All right, next, support strategies to help close opportunity and achievement gaps. So increase funding for the English learner program to eliminate the funding shortfall. This is another example of a fairly significant cross subsidy. Our English learner program is funded at a level, and then the general fund supports that to the tune of another million dollars a year approximately, actually exceeding that at this point. Create incentives and alternatives to attract, develop, and retain teachers, particularly teachers of color and teachers in shortage areas. Expand the extended time program so school districts can extend the school day, week, and/or year to help struggling students succeed. Increase funding for school-based pre-K programs and fully fund all required program components. Ensure safe schools. So increase the safe schools levy for school districts. This is one thing that was in last session that almost made it across the finish line, but it was part of the omnibus bill that got vetoed. Remove the per pupil limit and expand allowable uses of an existing funding source, the long-term facilities maintenance revenue program that we take part in. So expanding the use of those funds would help school districts ensure safe schools. Increase taxpayer equity, so increase equalization of the operating referendum debt service and local optional levies. Oppose taxpayer subsidies of private education through vouchers, tax credits, or scholarships. And then enhance local control. So we would ask our legislature to refrain from enacting new unfunded mandates and reduce existing mandates and burdensome paperwork requirements. And then expand the innovation zone law to allow school districts greater flexibility to try new instructional models, personalize student learning, and increase collaboration with post-secondary institutions and businesses. So with that, this is a little bit hard to see, so I think we're gonna go over this. I mentioned the key piece of data on this. It just highlights the percent reimbursement way over on the right. I can get this to you in a more readable format. The percent reimbursed on special education costs, and this is all the Association of Metropolitan School District members laid out, and you can see the range is from, what is that top number? I'm having a hard time seeing it, too. It's in the 30% to 72%. So special education will get a lot of attention this session. All of the major groups like MS, Minnesota Association of School Business Officials, Minnesota School Boards Association, Minnesota Association of School Administrators, and then Association of Metropolitan School Districts, Schools for Equity and Education, all these different organizations are aligning with special education as a major, major part of the efforts this coming session. So hopefully we see some movement in that area. All right, are there any questions? So these are just a few of the things, some majority of the items in the AMSD platform that align nicely with what our needs are as well, so hats off to the great work that that organization continues to do for the metropolitan school districts.
Questions for Dr. Kazmercheck?
I have one. Can you tell me as far as the legislative priority for the all metro school districts? Is that a group that puts that together? Is there, can you tell me where the priorities are coming from?
From this organization?
So I'm assuming that all metro school districts, everybody has a seat at the table?
I think there are 48-member districts or so in AMSD, and there's a committee with representation from the, well, the organization represents all, and there's a subcommittee that develops a legislative platform.
And then it comes back to the full committee for a vote?
Right, and this was just approved last week.
Okay.
Other questions, comments? Okay, with that, we will move on to C2, which is the superintendent's report. Dr. Kazmercheck?
Thank you, Chair Mullin, members of the board. So before tonight's meeting, we recognized students who represented the district in adapted soccer and unified bowling. We also recognized two members of the bowling team and a White Bear Lake Area High School diver who broke a 21-year-old school district record. Congratulations, Bears. The 2018 annual update was recently mailed to all district households. The publication provides a snapshot of the district, including information regarding student achievement, school climate, student awards, innovation, finance, district profile, the school board, district initiatives, and partnerships. You can find an electronic version of the update on the district's website. The district is hosting its third staff and community well-being series session, Make It Okay!, focused on stopping the stigma of mental illness and allowing the conversation and healing to begin. The event will take place at 7:00 PM on December 13th in the District Center Community Auditorium. The White Bear Lake Teachers Association will soon facilitate the Teacher of the Year process. Please consider nominating an educator who will represent all of the dedicated teachers in our district and compete in the state-level program. Find the form online at www.isd624.org. We hope that students enjoy themselves and get outside, read, and eat well during the upcoming winter break. It's hard to believe it's already that time of year. School will not be in session from December 22nd through January 1st. We look forward to welcoming students and families back to start 2019 off right on Wednesday, January 2nd. We are also excited to welcome next year's students into our schools for welcome-to-White Bear activities happening in January. Information and registration events will be hosted at all levels, including early childhood, elementary, middle school, and high school. Find information about these events on the school and district websites. I think it's your turn.
Okay. As we entered into November, the students and faculty had settled into their schedules, but to break up that routine, we were alerted that there was an electrical fire at South Campus. Luckily, no one was hurt and helped arrive with quick response so school was able to resume on Monday without missing a beat. Winter sports are well underway. The boys hockey team has had a good season thus far with a winning score of 5 to 1, putting them at first place in the Suburban East Conference. With the holidays coming up, South Campus is putting on two events to give back to others. Our first event is the upcoming blood drive on December 20th, where students 16 or older can donate their blood to patients in need of a transfusion. The second event is Casa de Esperanza, or the House of Hope, which is a women's shelter that focuses on assisting battered Latina women and their families. We ask that each first hour, adopt a family and donate Christmas gifts so that the family in need can enjoy their holiday without the stress of affording presents. And with that, I hope you all have a safe and happy holiday.
Any questions regarding the superintendent's report? All right, thank you very much. With that, we move into item D1, which is the 2017-2018 Combined World's Best Workforce and Achievement and Integration Summary Report. Ms. Paul.
All right, Chair Mullin, Dr. Kazmercheck.
All right, Chair Mullen, Dr. Kasprczyk, Ms. Pratt, and members of the board. We're going to be updating you briefly on the World's Best Workforce Report summary, which we've already presented to you at an earlier board meeting. And our focus tonight will be on the Achievement and Integration Required Report that we submit to the Department of Education each year. We will look at, briefly look at the goals that we have underneath to achieve our goals based on the funding we receive. And then we're going to focus on how we are serving our students and families by a brief update from each of our four liaisons. We actually have six liaisons in the district, two that work with our preschool programming, but the four that work with our K-12 program will give a brief update on the work that they do with students and families. And so we'll start with Brian Morris.
Welcome.
Thank you, Chair Mullen, members of the board, Dr. Kasprczyk. In the fall, we report a summary of our efforts to support and improve teaching and learning through our World's Best Workforce Plan and our Achievement and Integration Plan. The World's Best Workforce addresses the five goals of kindergarten readiness, third-grade literacy, closing achievement gaps, college and career readiness, and high school graduation. Our Achievement and Integration Plan addresses racial and economic integration, increasing student achievement, the creation of equitable educational opportunities, and a reduction of economic disparities based on students' diverse racial, ethnic, and economic backgrounds. I'll provide a summary of our Achievement and Integration goals while Jordan, Michael, Nirvana, and Brianna provide a snapshot of their work with students and families. Our Achievement and Integration goals are high because we believe our students deserve goals of excellence. Our first goal is to increase our four-year graduation rate to ninety-six percent by the year 2020. Our 2017 graduation rate was eighty-eight point seven percent. We are working to improve our students' graduation rate by addressing chronic absenteeism, providing behavior supports to increase classroom engagement, and working to improve student grade performance in the classroom. Our second goal is to close the achievement gap in reading and math by fifteen percentage points. Our gaps, based on MCA proficiency, currently range from three to twenty-eight percentage points in reading and fourteen to thirty-one percentage points in math. Actions that we are taking include professional development and avid instructional practices, instructional response to student data, targeted student support, and a focus on number sense and early literacy. Our third Achievement and Integration goal is to increase the number of underserved groups who are college and career ready. We've had increases in the percentage of all high school students participating and made great strides towards reaching equitable participation in career and college-focused classes. Our actions include identifying and supporting students, professional development and instruction for college and career readiness, and improved communication with parents and other stakeholders. Finally, our goals for Willow Lane Elementary School, which is our one racially identifiable school, are to increase reading proficiency from fifty-one point seven percent to seventy point eight percent. We had strong increases in 2018 in student reading proficiency, and that came as staff implemented their new WIN model. There was an increase in professional learning and literacy and number sense, new supports provided by the Student Success Coordinator at Willow, and student engagement and STEM programming. Also is part of our goals for Willow Elementary, teachers in Willow Lane and Otter Lake Elementary have participated in professional development to strengthen their shared integrated learning experience at Tamarack Nature Center.
Next, I would like to welcome Jordan Zimmerman to the podium to talk about the work that she does.
Thank you. Bonjour all, and thank you so much for your time this evening. My name is Jordan Zickerman, and I am the Native American Cultural Liaison and Indian Education Program Lead. Tonight, I would like to highlight an engagement model that we have used this year called an intentional social interaction. We like to call that an IZI for short. The purpose of an intentional social interaction is to bridge communication between students, families, and staff across the district in order to increase overall engagement. This year, we have held two IZIs, one at Willow in the fall and one this past weekend at North Campus that was open to all of our north, south, and ALC community members. We have received really positive feedback from our past events and plan to move forward with many more intentional social interactions in order to continuously build community relations. The next IZI will be held on January twenty-fifth at Willow Lane Elementary from five-thirty to seven-thirty PM, and we hope you will all be there with us. Thank you.
Hello, everyone, and good evening. My name is Michael Jett, and I am the African-American Cultural Liaison for the district. To highlight, to highlight my beginning of my school year, spending some time at Willow Lane's, having a few conversations with parents, we decided that we should have an African-American parent advisory meeting, which went well, had a packed house, and had some good conversations. Prior to having that meeting, I made a connection at our Urban Leadership Academy with a lady by the name of Trina. She is the Equity Coordinator at South Washington District. She was putting on a HBCU College Fair. An HBCU stands for Historically Black Colleges and Universities. We were able to attend that and took along quite a few students and also had a few parents join us. The HBCU field trip gave a lot of information to our parents and our students. Affordably, application fees was one of them, knowing that they can fill out one application for fifty-one schools at one fee. So that was the plus of that. Thank you for having us here tonight, and I want to continue my work.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nirvana Yang. I'm the Hmong and Asian-American Culture Liaison. Here at White Bear Lake Area School, we view diversity as an asset, and we embrace all cultures with humility and respect. Before the Hmong New Year, I thought it would be a great idea if the principal wished all their students a Happy Hmong New Year in the morning announcements. Some principal even took the extra step and said it in Hmong. It is something so simple, but it made a great impact on our students, especially when it came from the principal. I also got dressed in traditional Hmong clothing and spent a day at Hugo Elementary, teaching kindergartens and first graders about the Hmong New Year with a presentation and traditional ball toss activity. I think the students and even the teachers took away something from that day. This is just the first step that I took to embrace all culture, but with this great team, I think a lot of anything is possible. And so, thank you.
Muy buenas tardes. My name is Brianna Santos Coy. I'm the Cultural Liaison with Latino Students and Families here in White Bear Lake. On Thursday, December twentieth, I've created a learning opportunity for both students and staff to experience together, an all-day PD session called U.S. History Through a Latino-Chicano Lens. Latino students will workshop together between eight in the morning and twelve noon, and staff will workshop between one and four PM. This is an important opportunity for Latino students to see themselves and their community reflected in U.S. history curriculum, and for many, it will be the first time apart from what they've learned in my mentorship groups. It will be an amazing opportunity for staff to learn from other, from another community's perspective and to come away with concrete ways in which they can make their current curriculum more equitable and reflective of Latino students. It will also open the door for future curriculum work, I'm hoping, for all students in White Bear Lake. Staff have been saying that they're very much looking forward to this opportunity, and students have repeatedly said that they're so excited to finally learn more about how our community has experienced and shaped history in the United States, the positive impacts we have had here, and our identities as Latino-Americans and Chicanos. Muchas gracias.
All right, so we've got contact information. If anybody would like to get further information or if there's an idea, these are the people that I look to that take initiative and are so responsive to ideas that come to them from, from many ways, from parents, from community members, students, and staff. And so we want every student to feel part of the great vision we have here in White Bear. And with that, do you have any questions for us?
Questions for Mr. Paul, Ms. Paul, or anybody else in the group? Mr. Chapman?
Just have a question. In terms of the IZI event that occurred this past weekend, I was hoping to make it, didn't quite. How many people would you say attended? And what was the turnout like? I'm curious.
Well, I want to first credit the team here that gave full ownership over to our students, who organized and led communications. We had about seventy people there, I would say. Thank you, Mr. Wilson, for attending on behalf of the board. A lot of really good conversations. I think that was really courageous of the students to try us Saturday afternoon. They wanted to see if that would work in order to accommodate schedules. And part of an IZI is always thinking about what's the next move? What's the next play? What's the next opportunity for us? And they were already thinking about how to, how to leverage the good things that happened at the event and take some ideas forward. And they were very open to thinking about how they might continue to try to find the right opportunity for more people to attend. But I thought that was pretty, pretty good to have seventy people there for the first weekend event that they hosted. Did you want to add anything?
Chapman?
Now, there's going to be one at South, is there, at some point? Did I see that? Or was I looking at something else on the slide there?
There's an upcoming.
One at Willow.
The post-it fee that was referred to will be at Willow. But one of the things that the liaisons have been working together on is how do we create mini IZIs so that we kind of, instead of thinking that all the energy has to go into one event, just having some smaller ones that just create the opportunity for people to take off their titles and roles and come together and just have really high-quality conversations.
Ellison?
I just wanted to commend you all for the work that you're doing, and thank you for ensuring that each child in our district feels welcome and feels like they, this is a place for them. So, thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Chapman, it could have been that at this past IZI, the primary invitees were north, south, and ALC. Maybe that's where you got the South Campus gist of it. But yeah, there's not one that's going to be held itself right away anyway, right?
I'd like to just say, I'd like to echo what Ms. Ellison said, and thank you all for your work. It's definitely well-received in the district and hearing a lot of positive stuff for the things you're doing. So thank you all very much. All right? Thank you. With that, we will go into D2, which is the Presentation and Public Hearing related to the proposed 2018 payable 2019 property tax levy. After the presentation, we will open it up for the board members to ask questions regarding such, and then we will open it up for the public hearing. So with that, Mr. Wall?
Good evening, Chair Mullen, members of the board, Dr. Kasprczyk and Ms. Pratt. Tonight is our public hearing for taxes, school district taxes payable for 2019. This is the final step in certifying the 2019 tax levy. This is a bit of a lengthy presentation to meet all the requirements, and so I'll try to keep this moving along as efficiently as possible. The presentation is posted on our website, and so if somebody wants to dig a little deeper into the slides, it's available on the finance page under Additional Resources. State law requires a public meeting for taxes for the tax levy certification between November twenty-fifth and December twenty-eighth. We're well within that window of time. School districts typically do this at a regularly scheduled school board meeting, and the board typically would adopt the levy at that time. There are statutory requirements for information presented, presented here on the slide and here on the agenda for tonight. We'll look at background on school funding, look at previous year, in current year, district budget, district's proposed tax levy for taxes payable in 2019, and how those taxes are impacted on property taxes. There'll also be an opportunity for public comment. I'm going to skip through some of these where it talks about student achievement at this point and go through school funding. So there are some challenges, themes that come up in school funding that are challenges for schools. And Dr. Kasprczyk mentioned a few of those on the legislative priorities for educational organizations around the state. One is that since 2002-3, state general ed revenue formula has not kept pace with inflation. We had an increase of two percent last year, which was close to the Consumer Price Index rate. But per pupil allowance for 2018-19 would have needed to increase by six hundred eighteen dollars or nearly ten percent to have kept pace with inflation since 2002-3. This graph shows that green line would be the trajectory of school funding since 2003. And you can see that in oh-three, oh-five, there was kind of flatlined there. There were a few years where it kept pace with inflation, then it flatlined again for a number of years. And now, over the last six years or so, it's been closer to keeping pace with inflation. But when it flat, when it has flatlined a couple times like that over a sixteen-year period, the state hasn't been able to close that gap. Once the gap is created, it gets a little larger each time, and so that certainly has impacted how we do business in schools. The second area that has been a challenge for school districts, and Dr. Kasprczyk mentioned this earlier as well, and that's the underfunding of special, special education. The federal government and the state have not fulfilled their promises for funding special education mandates. And when, when the funding falls below expenditures in special education, then the general fund picks up the rest of that. Across the state, the average underfunding for a special education student is about five thousand eight hundred dollars in our district. That's over ten million dollars that is covered through the, through the general ed, general ed budget. So again, this will be a priority for educational organizations and school boards as they move toward the upcoming legislative session. As a result of these two areas, funding lagging behind inflation in the, in the underfunding of special education, that's led to a growing dependence on referendum revenue. In ninety-two, ninety-three, the first year that districts could have operating levies, the average was three hundred thirty-two dollars per pupil. Sixty-five percent of school districts had an operating levy. Twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen, a hundred percent of school districts in the state have an operating levy, and the average of that is one thousand three hundred seventy-one dollars. And, and over those period of years, there have been multiple times where the state has decreased funding to public schools and transferred that responsibility to local property taxes. So what happens when that occurs is the local property taxes increase, but the school district doesn't get additional revenue. So change, I just explained this, change in tax levy does not necessarily determine a change in revenue, depending on whether the state decreases funding from the state level and pushes it toward local property taxes. What complicates this a little bit for taxing is that cities and counties, their fiscal year is the same as the calendar year. In school districts, our fiscal year is beginning July first. And so taxes payable in 2019 at the city and county level fund the budget for 2019. For the school district, taxes payable in 2019 fund the budget for the 2019-20 school Our district budgets are divided into separate funds, nine different funds, and I'll break those, each of those down in the following slides. Each year, we publish our, our budget and fund balances in the local newspaper, and this will be, this will go in the newspaper in the next couple of weeks, and we'll look at this more closely now. So we look at revenue for all funds. You can see that most of the revenue for a school district, almost eighty-three percent, falls in the general fund category. That's funds collected primarily by state funds. Our total budget is just shy of a hundred thirty-six million. Again, a hundred twelve million of that coming from state revenue. When we dig, dig deeper into the general fund, you see that, and I misspoke a little bit when I said that eighty-three percent comes from state revenue. That's eighty-three percent is general fund. When we look more closely at the general fund, we see that seventy-one point six percent of that comes from state revenue, just over eighty million, and nearly twenty-three percent are from local property taxes. When you look at federal aid, accounts for only about two point five percent of those funds. That's a small portion of our, of course, of our school district funds. Those would include Title I or Title Funds, nutrition services, some special education expenses. School districts that have higher free and reduced lunch counts typically have a higher port. School districts that have higher free and reduced lunch counts typically have a higher portion of federal aid in their budget. These numbers are very typical for metropolitan school districts, and they look really close to how our district budget is from year to year. General fund expenditures by program. So here we can see that regular ed, special ed, and vocational instruction, along with pupil support, account for over 70% of our general fund or general ed expenditures. Transportation and operations account for about 14%. Administration and instructional support account for 12%. Again, this looks very typical to what most metropolitan school districts, how that would break down, and very typical to our same numbers last year. This looks at general fund expenditure by object, and so we are a very heavy human resources dependent industry, and so it wouldn't be a surprise that salary and wages and employee benefits account for most of our expenditures in this area. Next would be purchase services, and that includes fees to 916 Intermediate District for setting for special education placements. It would include vocational and career courses at 916, transportation, maintenance, maintenance contracts, legal services. All those would come out of purchase services, accounting for about 10%. Moving on, we'll look at how the levy is determined, and how this year's levy compares to last year's levies. I'll look at specific reasons for changes in the levy and then impact on property taxes. Every owner of land in the school district or property in the school district pays taxes to various taxing jurisdictions, city, county, school district. Each jurisdiction sets its own levy, and those are determined, maximum levies are determined by state law. And the county plays the role of billing for property taxes, collecting property taxes, and distributing funds back to each jurisdiction, including school districts. In November each year, you get a property tax, property tax statement from the county, and on the property tax statement, it compares the proposed levy to previous year levies, shows voter and other approved taxes, reporting by taxing jurisdiction, as well as notices of public hearings. And I think we all received those over the last month. Each school district levy, or each school district may levy taxes in over forty different categories. And these limits, levy limits are are determined by the state legislature. And then voters, some of the levies are voter-approved levies. We work with the Minnesota Department of Education to input data that to help them calculate our levy, and then throughout September to determine the levy and make sure that our numbers are accurate. So the key steps in the levy are summarized on the next slide, and I won't read through all of this. But what this identifies is there are a lot of players in determining the levy. The city or county assessor who assesses the value of each property, the legislature identifies the formulas, the county auditor calculates the tax capacity for the school district, legislature sets the limits and the formulas, Minnesota Department of Education calculates the detailed limits. And then, that's where you come in. The school board, in step six, then certifies the proposed amount and determines the final levy. So there's a lot of steps in the process, and the school board just is one player in that process. So this just kind of shows the calendar of that. So on September 7th, MDE releases to the school district what that levy, initial levy looks like. We bring, we work with them to finalize that. We brought it to you September 24th. Mid-November, the county mails the proposed taxes. December 10th, tonight, we're having our hearing, and then the final step is the certification tonight. Okay, so looking specifically at the levy, so the total increase from 2018 is of $5.3 million or 13.8%. And next, we'll look at those changes by category. This is a summary, and if you're looking at this at home at some point, this will be easier to read. But this identifies each area in which we collect levy dollars, and I'll go through each of these where changes occurred. The first one is the voter-approved operating referendum. This one went up slightly. This is largely up because enrollment increased. So when the amount of money that we collect per student is a fixed amount, we don't, we won't get any more than the levy approved for this year. And so we, it really changes based on enrollment. If enrollment goes down, that number will go down. If enrollment goes up, that number will go up. Second is long-term facilities and maintenance. This category, the levy actually decreased this year. So school districts are permitted to sell bonds to maintain facilities. The state does not play a role in building schools or maintaining schools. That's a local property tax issue. Local school board, local property tax that manages maintenance of facilities and buildings. And so we have bonds that, we've sold in the past bonds to fix up our facilities, and we pay those on a schedule over time. And that scheduled payment went down a little bit this year. The next area is prior year adjustments. So when we when we upload data for the state to calculate the tax levy, that's based on predictions of what we think's going to happen that year. The funding for, the funding calculated by MDE is based on predictions. At the end of the year, when the actual numbers come in, there are adjustments to the prior year levy. And so in this case, we had increase in enrollment more than we had predicted. And so it led to an increase in that adjustment to the prior year. This is the one that affected it the most, debt service. So in a particular, particularly as it relates to OPEB bonds, that stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. And in 2008, the district sold bonds equal to its liability for post-employment benefits. And at that time, the legislature passed a law stating that public jurisdictions could sell post-employment benefit bonds. School districts and cities and counties did so. Those are paid off over a period of time. We have two more years scheduled on our OPEB bonds. Those two final years of payments are larger payments. That went up $4 million from approximately $6 million to $10 million this year. And that's had the most significant, this accounts for 75% of the increase in our levy this year. It also should be noted that there, in addition to school district property taxes, there are things, other things that affect your property tax, such as changes in assessed value of your home. Many people saw a significant increase in the assessed value of their property this year. That combined with a property tax or levy increase kind of magnifies the difference. Also, changes in total value of all property across the district will affect it. So if the net increase of all property of the district increases more than the value of your property, you might see a smaller increase than others. If your property jumped a little more than the average across the district, you'll see a bigger jump in your taxes that year. The following tables will look at trends in our school levies. During this period from 2016 to 2019, we've seen property values increased by 14.7%. I'll show you in a chart. On this one, if you look at it later, you can look up specific home values on the left and then follow the property taxes for that home value. So if you look at a $217,000 home value on the on the first column, and then follow that across, you can see the property tax increase each year. And we'll look at these, we'll break this out so it's a little more clear to see. So in this example, the home on the left is a $250,000 residential homestead property. And you can see that from 2016 to 17, those property taxes dropped a little bit. 2017 to 18, they jumped a little bit. The 2019, that number looks like it returned down below on 2016. It was 1193. So a bigger jump in 2019. And same with the $400,000 home, you can see taxes went down a little, up a little, and then up more in 2019. If you look at commercial industrial property, you see the same kind of trajectory over those four years as well as apartment property. There are some tax breaks available. As a school district, we certainly don't provide tax advice to folks on property taxes. But there are some opportunities that people concerned about, you know, who are interested in pursuing a tax break can take a look at. The Circuit Breaker, Homestead Credit Refund's been around for about 50 years. You can go to revenue.state.mn.us and look at that. There's some income requirements on there. The Minnesota Special Property Tax refund might qualify for some people, and this is based on increase of at least 12% and $100 over the prior year. And you can consider that as a way to recoup some of those funds. And then finally, there's a senior citizen property tax deferral that limits maximum amount of property tax paid to 3% of household incomes. And there's an income limit on that. So, that's the conclusion of the presentation. There will be opportunity now for public comment. Turn that over to you, and then the next step would be for the board to certify the property tax levy later in the agenda tonight.
Okay, so before we get to public comment, I'll open it up to the board, ask any questions if they have any. Ms. Ellison?
I have a couple of questions to clarify some of the things, Mr. Wall. My first question is, why hasn't the poor student spending kept pace with inflation? I mean, that's a huge deficit. And I guess connecting with what Dr. Kazmicek was talking about with the AMSD priorities, is that going to be a possibility to close that gap? Is that just wishful thinking?
Well, it's debated every biennium on how much funding should occur. And so we watch closely the budget projections, and as we look at the budget projections for the next cycle, it looks like there's going to be a positive balance going into this cycle, but some of that money is committed already to reserves and so forth. So that's politics.
Okay. Another question that I had, you mentioned something about there can be a property tax increase, but then the school district doesn't get part of that revenue. Could you explain that a little further?
Yeah, and so what the state has done multiple times over the last decade even is shifted some of the some of the funding responsibility to the local taxpayer. So I showed you that in '92-'93, there were $300-some was a typical levy, and now it's up to $1371. And that's a, inflation, of course, accounts for some of that. But some of that also has been a shifting from state responsibility for funding education to local property tax owners.
May I add? I'll add an example, operating capital revenue is an example. That, I don't have the percentages offhand, but a decade ago, it was, I'll just use a crude example. Maybe it was a state aid and a levy share, and that share might have been something like $1,200 state aid and $300 local levy. And over time, certain categories have shifted so that that, as an example, and I'd have to look up the specifics, but now, instead of $1,200 state aid, it might be $800 state aid and then $700 local. So it's the same amount of revenue, it just more has been shifted under the local taxpayer rather than state aid. So there are multiple categories where that's occurred over time. And so in addition to the operating levies that districts are passing to make up that gap, there are, part of that gap has been created by the shift of state aid onto different local levies.
Okay, so the amount of money that has been put from the state out to school districts has decreased or has not kept up pace?
It hasn't kept pace.
Hasn't kept pace, and some of the responsibility has shifted more towards local districts. Is that correct? Okay. And then, thank you. And then my final question is, could you just define post-employment benefit bonds for me?
Sure. So if you go back to the '70s and '80s, one way that school districts and counties and cities settled contracts with employees was to promise post-employment health benefits. That was a really cheap way to settle a contract at a time when districts were cash-strapped and health insurance didn't cost very much back then. And then as the decades passed, health insurance skyrocketed, and all these public entities discovered that we have way more in liability for post-employment benefits than we have cash to cover. And so the legislature recognized this and allowed counties and cities and school districts to sell bonds for an amount equal to their liability. And so we did that in 2008, and that's been a benefit to the school district in many ways. Those, you know, several million dollars a year that we would funds that would come out of our general fund that we're able to pay for out of our post-employment benefits bonds, the OPEB bonds.
Great. Thank you very much.
Other questions? Mr. Chapman?
Yeah, I've got a question relative to the OPEB bonds. None of us, myself included, on the board, and I know Dr. Kazmicek nor you were involved in the positions that you're in now back in 2008. What kind of indication is there that, why the increases these last two years? Significant increases in terms of the bond schedule? Is there any documentation or anything you've come across as to why it was structured the way it was?
Well, I'll let Dr. Kazmicek. He's been around it a little longer.
A little bit longer, not much. It's the way it was structured when the debt was issued. And it was issued, taking into consideration all the other debt that the district had at the time. So that was, that was the decision that was made back in '08. This is how it was structured. So we're paying it down the way it was set up. And so the way a debt schedule would look is that you would layer it on existing debt, and this was, this was how it was done. So we're seeing not really, well, it's almost like a balloon payment at the end on principle, rather than spreading that out more early. It was done, it probably wasn't done early because there was an attempt to maintain a more level tax increase year to year, and so now we're paying for that.
Other questions, comments? Okay. At this time, I'd like to open up the public comment portion of the meeting. I know that we have one slip from, is it Mark? And I apologize, Mark, if I messed your last name up, but is it Stang? And so I'd ask you to come up and speak, and then after that, we will open it up. Mark, for the record, can you state your address, please, and your name?
Sure. My family and I live at 2449 Oak Street in White Bear Lake.
Thank you.
I brought a visual aid, so if this is any help to the members of the board, at least, you'll see the numbers that I'm referring to. All these figures are taken from the 2019 proposed property tax bill that I received in the mail about a month ago. First, thank you to the board for the opportunity to speak here tonight. My family and I purchased a home in White Bear Lake. We closed on it in mid-February. The second line there in red shows you the purchase price at the time of $242,500. The top line represents the assessed value on the property in calendar year 2018 of $245,600. It's often said that something is worth what somebody's willing to pay for it. Now, this house had been on the market for five or six months at a much higher price than we initially, eventually ended up paying for it. The reason the house didn't sell was apparently because no one else thought it was worth what the sellers were asking for the purchase price. And so about every 30 days, they dropped the price, and it didn't sell. And 30 days later, they dropped the price again, and it didn't sell. And thirty days later, they dropped the price again, and it didn't sell. And they kept dropping the price until they finally took it off the market after four months trying to sell the property. And we had been in the market looking for houses, and our realtor came to us and said, I know of a property that's not currently on the market, but it's about to be relisted. And so we went over and looked at the property, and the next day, the property came back on the market, and they had dropped the price again. And we eventually negotiated a final purchase price of two hundred and forty-two thousand five hundred dollars. So imagine my surprise when I got my proposed tax property twenty nineteen bill this year, and it said that the assessed valuation of my home was two hundred and seventy-two thousand six hundred dollars. Well, I had just bought the property in February, so I'm not sure how Ramsey County figured out what my property was worth, but since they had a purchase price that was only six months old, as a novice in this process, I'm thinking, well, somebody just bought the property. That should be a pretty good indication of what it's worth on the open market. But they decided the property was worth thirty thousand dollars more than we paid for it. And as a result, my property taxes are scheduled to go up almost fifteen percent this year. Now, where I come from, there isn't almost anything out there that's going up fifteen percent a year. So if somebody here can tell me why I should be paying almost five hundred dollars more in property taxes than I paid on this property in twenty eighteen, I'd be happy to listen. But that seems like an exorbitant increase to where I come from. And my wife and I are both retired. We pretty much rely on our, she gets a pension, she's a former social worker. I'm pretty much living off a couple hundred dollars in investment income and the money that I get from Social Security, which I just started collecting a year ago. The final line on the bottom that somebody maybe can, maybe Dr. Wald can explain this, or I missed it in his explanation, under line B, other local levies. My assessment for other local levies goes up more than two hundred dollars. That's about half of the total increase for my proposed increase on my property. I see the line that says voter-approved levies. That's going up pennies. That's going up fifteen bucks a year. So I guess I'd like to know what other local levies covers that it's worth more than two hundred dollars a year of assessed value on my property. And that's pretty much what I'm here to do, is point this out and ask if anybody can enlighten me on why these numbers seem to be out of whack. Or maybe they aren't out of whack, I just haven't been a resident of White Bear Lake long enough. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Dr. Kazmicek, will you follow up with this gentleman to, maybe he can understand it a little better?
Would you mind connecting outside of the board meeting? Would you mind connecting?
No.
Okay, can we make sure we have your contact information, and we'll get back to you right away tomorrow? Mr. Wald did go through the explanation, but we'll boil it down even further for you so you can see exactly where that, why that particular line on your tax bill took the hit this year.
Yeah, my understanding was from his explanation that most of it had to do with retiring the bond debt. And there was a big increase from six to roughly ten million dollars in the one year, or one of the final two years of the bond debt that needed to be retired.
And there are other categories too, and we could give you more detail if you'd like. We could reach out to you, and you're welcome to-
Can I ask Dr. Wald a question while I'm here?
Sure.
Your bond debt is being retired for this next fiscal year for a total of ten million dollars, is that correct?
Yeah, that, this year, we have two more years of payments.
Right.
Twenty nineteen and twenty twenty.
Right, but the twenty nineteen is ten million dollars total?
Correct.
Okay. Up from six million dollars last year. Okay. And all of that is essentially post-retirement pension payments to former employees of the district, is that correct?
That's true, and those will cover all of our liabilities through, well-
Forty or fifty years into the, yeah.
Forty, fifty more years of liability, and we'll be covering that.
That's not an annual expense for those employees? It's, you're not paying ten million dollars in pensions to former employees in one year, is that what you're, okay.
This will, once these bonds are paid off, it'll cover our expenses until we no longer have any post-employment-
The bonds, these are held in a trust, and the trust, and then on an annual basis, we are able to use part of that trust to pay for retiree, the cost of retiree-
Yeah, it seemed like an awful big figure for one year, but, okay.
Can I just make that?
Thank you, appreciate you.
Ms. Faye, I believe, has a question.
Sorry, Mr. Stang, I just wanted to clarify too that when we're talking about the post-employee benefits, that is for people that were hired before a certain year, so-
One of the provisions that was, it was required that those benefits be sunset out of contracts, so that type of obligation won't exist going forward. So it was a way to honor what had been negotiated prior, and now those have been bargained out of contracts, and this is what's left.
Yeah, I've got a couple of town members that are teaching by-
Yeah, so just so that no one thinks, yeah, that it's, there's, you had to be hired before, I think it was like ninety?
Here was ninety, ninety-two, yeah.
Or something, so current employees don't have that benefit, so it will not be paid forever and ever. I just, yeah, some people get confused by that and think that every single teacher in the whole state has that benefit, but that's not true. It was individual contracts, but it disappears then.
Yeah, there's a rule in nineteen, you're in-
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
I'm aware of that, thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Yes, ma'am? Please come up and state your name and your address, please. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Beverly Farrer. I live at thirty-four seventy Rolling View Court in the city of White Bear Lake, and I just have two points to make. I appreciate the presentation. It was very thorough. I understand what was presented, but when I look at page eighty-one of your one hundred and eighty-nine page handout, I'm looking at the levy categories, and under the general fund, at the very bottom, there's a line that's adjustments. And it was sixty thousand roughly last year, and it's moving to one million three hundred and sixty thousand next year. And that is an enormous leap without very much transparency of why that is and how that came to be. And that matters a lot to me because I very strongly believe in transparency, but also in the Ramsey County statement, my house value went up twenty-one percent. That's great, I get that, I do the math. But my voter-approved levy went up ten percent, that's great, also, I appreciate that. My other local levies went up forty-five percent. So if my house is twenty-one percent and that's forty-five percent, my other, my second and last point is that that is an abrupt, and in my opinion, too large change from one year to the next. And I would recommend that you consider that there should be some kind of ceiling on that kind of a jump, or at least some kind of rational explanation to folks of that enormous of a jump comparative to the last year. That's my point, thank you.
Can I get you to do me one favor before I ask Dr. Kazmicek to help us here?
Sure.
There's some white cards over there. Can I get you to fill one out so that we can make sure we put it in for the record?
Sure.
Thank you very much.
And then again, Ellen Aufer, we would love to follow up with you and give you more specifics. Mr. Wald did talk about some of the adjustments, but we can dig deeper into those and share with you what those are and what they all entail. We'd be happy to do that.
A jump.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else under, yes, sir? Please come up and state your name and your address, please. And then I'm going to ask you to do the same thing and fill out one of the white cards just to help us keep track of the record.
Sure. I don't have much to add, or, I'm sorry. My name's Matt Tremert. I live at fifty-two ninety Carolyn Lane in White Bear Township. My property tax is basically the same as the last two people up here. I had this, I've seen the same thing. My, that other approved levy went up over two hundred dollars. Overall, my property tax went up fifteen percent. I just think that seems to be quite a huge jump, and it will affect, it will affect our monthly budget, so I think that should be, you know, taken into account. That's all I had to say.
Then Ellen Aufer, if you would like to visit more specifically about your, if you have your tax statement, we'd be happy to do that, so leave your contact information. Okay?
Anybody else under public comment? Yes, ma'am? Please state your name, and I'm going to ask you to do the same, fill out the white sheet, your name and your address, please.
My name is Jennifer Kostrowski. I live at two-four-eight-five Gisella Boulevard in White Bear Lake. Thank you for listening to our public comments, we really appreciate that. I moved back to White Bear Lake a couple of years ago, was a longtime resident of Minneapolis. One of the reasons why I left Minneapolis was to try to escape huge taxes. I pride myself on living in White Bear Lake, I grew up here, that's another reason why I moved back. Very happy to be back. However, I am a single individual, single homeowner, I'm a public employee, I do not make an incredible sum of money, and I am here to just state my disdain at this increase, and again, specifically at the other levies portion, which in my case went up forty-six percent. My overall taxes went up twenty-five percent. My property value went up thirty thousand dollars in one year. And I don't know if I can afford to live here much longer if this continues. And it's just really a shame for me to have invested so much to come here and risk leaving a place I'd been at for eighteen years to come back home. And I don't feel that there's any explanation here, guys. The adjustments that that resident over there asked about, it should be explained right here, right now. And having a presentation of one hundred and eighty-nine pages that I was not aware of, it was not listed on this document, I did not receive any notice, I can't read one hundred and eighty-nine pages in five minutes, and now you guys are going to vote on this. I'm sorry to get choked up, but I love my place, I love this place, but it makes me very sad. So I don't have a lot of other people to lean on, so if this continues, I probably won't be here. So please consider that. I'll put my name down on the card for you to talk to as well. I understand about raising taxes, it's kind of inevitable, but you have to think about the little people too. So we're not all dual-income, we don't all have great jobs, so, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. I'll take another crack at that adjustment, and then Tom and Tim, if you would chime in if you guys have the detail. I'm just going to go back to one of the slides and, correct me if I'm not in the right spot, gentlemen, but the one million two hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollar adjustment dealt primarily with our enrollment having been lower than what we had anticipated. Am I accurate here, Tim and Tom? So the majority of that adjustment for the general fund had to do with the fact that our enrollment grew, and so our, any levy tied to a pupil count was then adjusted in the subsequent year. So that explains, I think, most of that one point three million adjustment.
Ms. Ellison, do you have a comment?
What is our per pupil cost?
Actually, that's probably in our next presentation, in our audit report, but-
You mean the money we get from the state or our costs?
No, it's going to be ten, eleven thousand per pupil is a range.
Okay.
It's going to come up in the next report, which is the audit report.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I mean, I can give you, if you give me like thirty seconds, I can give you a-
Is there anybody else that would like to speak in public comment? Why, I'll catch you both. Ma'am, I'm going to ask you to fill out one of those white sheets, please come up, and actually, I'm going to let him answer, let Dr. Kazmicek answer, and then I'll allow you to speak to public comment.
Why don't you go ahead?
Okay. Please state your name and your address for the record.
I'm Amanda Rosso at thirty-three fifty Twin Lake Court, Little Canada, Minnesota, so a bit of an odd duck, but I promise we're zoned for White Bear Lake. Same story as just about everyone else has come up with, our overall increase or our assessment was less than ten percent, so not terrible. But it's that darn other local levies line that was up thirty-five percent for us, which is about four hundred dollars. So I guess my question is just, well, I know who's going to approve it tonight, and that's the people before me, but who comes up with that total increase? Who's setting that before we got to this point tonight?
Well, that's through a variety of means, so it's through, the district presents to, uploads data to the state on what our expenditures are. In this case, the OPEB bonds are the numbers that impacted it the most.
Excuse me, Mr. Wald, I think that Gray wants you to go to the podium because he's not able to pick it up and make sure, so we just want to make sure that we're getting it for the record.
Yeah, so the question was, how does, like, who determines what these numbers are going to be? And so it's, there's about four thousand calculations that go into it, but it's, the school district uploads its data to the state, the Minnesota Department of Education crunches those numbers, the county takes those numbers and factors it in with property values, and then the number, the levy is calculated per property, per parcel.
Okay. And what impact is a citizen can I have on that? Who am I voting for in this process? School board, voting for?
Yeah, school board members.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
All of our school board members.
Okay. So I don't know that I can still impact anything tonight, but in the future, I know that my vote does count and impacts my property tax. Thank you.
Thank you for filling out the form.
Good evening, thank you for giving me an opportunity to comment. My name is Rick Beenick. I live at fifty-one sixty-one Farmwood Drive North in Hugo. I moved up there about a year ago, don't know much about this community. It's Washington County up there. I received my taxes, and I live in a townhome, and my taxes jumped up twenty, twenty-point four percent. I mean, this is like, wow. I moved out of my place, Amonti Meidei, where I used to live, and I was paying larger taxes there just to downsize, to try and economize my life. I'm kind of getting towards the end here. But holy cow, I'm getting knocked in the teeth by this one. I mean, the amount of money that I got in my other levy was astronomical, and again, I'm just, I'm overwhelmed by it. I just don't get it. I'm just looking for some answers, and I'm really not hearing much tonight. I mean, I keep hearing, we'll talk to you, we'll talk to you, we'll get you a little more information, but, well, I'll tell you what, for anybody else that might be looking at this broadcast later, they're going to say, well, how do I get that information? You're really not giving us much here. And like I said, it's a big overwhelming sum, it really is. It's literally a third of what my taxes are between the county and the city. It's just, it's knocking me out. I just hope you take that into consideration, what you're doing to folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I just want to reiterate that the presentation did highlight the major reasons for the changes in the tax bill. So there, again, to look at individual tax statements, we're happy to do that, but those are the primary reasons that were presented. There aren't additional, there won't be a lot of additional reasons for the increase. The big one was that bond payment. Per pupil, a little over twelve thousand in fiscal year seventeen, that's a per-student expense.
Well, I think Ms. Newmaster, Dr. Newmaster, and then I'll get back to you. Dr. Newmaster?
Thank you. And I'm going to risk going into a coughing fit, but I did have to say this. I mean, I also live in White Bear, and I feel for everyone who is proud of White Bear, and we're happy that our district is growing, and that does mean there's more kids and more expenses. But I looked at my own property taxes, and they went up too, and I'm, I live by myself, and I'm proud of living in White Bear, but I thought, now, maybe I'm wrong, and I'll have to talk to Dr. Kazmicek too, but I thought that property tax bill that comes reflects all the different taxes that are collected with our property taxes. I mean, there's county and-
Yes.
And other costs, whether it's your fire department, your city costs, you know, there's lots of things- lots of things we're taxed for.
Correct.
So when I see that big bill, it's not all something that we're collecting just for the school district.
Right, there are jurisdictions. You're right.
Okay. So I'm figuring we're getting fine emergency services, we're getting our fire department, our city, our, you know, so mine went up, and I thought it must have been those darn egress windows. But, you know, as you try and figure out, and then you think, well, costs go up, and we do have really good services in this community. So I know, I'm looking at the increase we have for the school district, and I'm kind of a simple sort with numbers. I have to ask someone else to crunch them. But I do understand we're paying for a lot of things with our property taxes. So we're not the only, even though we're maybe the largest, because we have a lot of kids coming in, that we need to educate as well as we've done in the past. So I hope I understand that, but I'm just hoping that we all know that that property tax pays for a lot of services. And the school district property taxes might be the only ones that have to be approved. Is that correct? Or that are voted for, some of our taxes we vote for, because we approve them.
Some of them do, yeah. There's, there are differences with different jurisdictions.
Right.
Tax authority.
So I know it's complicated, and it covers a lot of things. But some of those property taxes being collected, we approved with a referendum that went in the past, and we're still collecting for it. So I think, we all hope that maybe it won't grow that much, but it's complicated. That's my simple statement.
Ms. Ellison, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to clarify from my own understanding that the two major reasons for this increase were increased enrollment that were beyond projection.
Or, yes, and even if projected, there's, there would be an increase, because there are certain things tied to pupil count.
Okay. So increase in students, and then the post-employee benefit bonds.
Yep. The, the bond schedule, the payment schedule that was established back in oh-eight.
So the, is that correct, Mr. Walt? Those two, so we're paying, we're paying, seeing an increase because of the increase in students in the district, but, and also paying for the post-employment benefit bonds that was established a long time ago that we are footing the rest of the bill for. Is that correct?
And one more thing, and that's the prior year adjustment, because in effect, we under-leveed last year, and so that has to get caught up this year.
Okay.
And there's kind of a perfect storm, because you have a year when assessed property values went up a lot, the city levy went up, and the school district levy went up. And so those three things kind of created this perfect storm of property taxes this year. And it's impacting, I know all of you are property owners in the school district, as am I, and it's a big, big increase this year.
Thank you.
Ms. Bloy?
So after two years, so it's ten million, and then what, six million the second, or I don't have it in front of me. What happens the third year then?
Then the levy will drop.
Okay, so then that's zero.
Well, the OPEB...
The OPEB I'm talking about.
The OPEB bond goes to zero, but debt service doesn't go to zero, because we have other debts out there. And some of those debts are structured lower right now and increased later when the OPEB, when the OPEB expires, retires. And so it will go down after these two years.
What do we think it will go down to? What is the other debt service? What, what will the other debt service raise to after those, that two-year period?
I'm just looking at Tom Wazork, our Director of Finance. I think, I think it's roughly around that four million where...
We, I think we would, we would need to look at our debt payment schedule to answer that accurately, I think, and I don't know if we have that here. It's certainly something we could, at the January Work Study Meeting, for example, we could, we could talk about that. We were planning to do that at some point anyway, given the facilities work that we're doing, to take a look at our debt schedule.
Yeah, so it'll drop about, the amount that it went up this year is about what it'll drop in that year, when the OPEB bonds expire. And then we have other LTFM bonds that are scheduled as well, and those, those payments will increase a little bit.
There's other debt that gets layered on. It's not, that's not our only debt. There's other debt that gets factored in, and it's woven together, so.
But that's underlying the OPEB right now. I mean, we're paying on those now.
We're paying on those, yeah, we're paying maybe a little smaller amount on those right now than we will in the future.
Right.
But, and earlier I showed that our long-term facilities maintenance bonds dropped about one point three million this year. That was scheduled to offset these OPEB bonds a little bit, just didn't offset it as much as, given all the other things that came into it, like prior year adjustments, the impact was greater than we anticipated.
I mean, I guess the, the question behind my question is, we're, we have some, some leeway with adjusting these things as we're going forward, as we, as we retire the debt, as we go forward. We have some...
Yes, yes. Coming here looks better.
To the extent that the debt payments are scheduled, the only way we would change that is if we refinance the debt, which we've done in the past. We've refunded some debt because we were able to get a better interest rate. If you've been around long enough, you've acted on that. I'm trying to remember the last time we did that, a couple of years ago, maybe. So that's when it would change. Otherwise, it's, you're locked in at what you, when you issue them.
I mean, I can see where everyone, I think everyone got the same sort of shock when everybody opened it, just because, like you said, it was a perfect storm of a lot of good things happening, but then it, I mean, my house appraised for, I think, forty thousand more than last year, which was really a big shock to me. So I mean, I get where it's coming from.
Great if you're selling, not great if you're paying property taxes on it.
Correct. But it means the community's doing well.
Yeah, and we came out of a period where we saw decreases, pretty significant decreases, and we're seeing, seeing the opposite now. And that, that hits people hard, yeah.
And there is a process where people can challenge the assessed value of their homes if they think that it was assessed unfairly, and, and, you know, sometimes people are able to get the assessed value reduced. That then results in lower property taxes. Do that through Ramsey County.
Sorry.
Mr. Walt, I'm looking at this slide that is the comparison of proposed property tax levy payable in 2018 to actual levy payable in 2019. I think those numbers actually are switched around, but under debt service funds, I'm looking at that, and I see there is a large jump in the long-term facility maintenance. The actual payable in 2018 was one point three million, proposed in 2019, four point four million. Could you speak to that? It's a three point one million dollar uptick.
For 2020, pay 2020?
Payable 2019. It's this one that's got the yellow, you know, stripe down the middle where it's got actual levy payable in 2018, proposed levy payable in 2019, and then the change, dollar amount change, percentage change. And it's got the levy category. Part of your presentation.
Part of that was because the, in the general fund... Mr. Wazork, can you come to the mic, please, for the record? Thank you, sir. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I apologize.
That's fine. Just for everybody to know, I'm Tom Wazork, Director of Finance. If you remember, in the, in the slides, there was a reduction in the general fund of like one point three million for long-term facilities maintenance. That was offset with a positive in debt service, because we're essentially using those dollars to pay debt service. So the net result would have been the, the increase in the OPEB bonds under debt service. So we had a minus up here and a plus down here, which equated to the positive four point some million in total debt service.
Right, but we're still speaking, though, in terms of long-term facility maintenance, though. I'm not sure how that, I, I understand what, what it does as far as that category, the debt service funds category, but I'm not sure how it ties in otherwise with OPEB.
So we, if you, if you look at that, we also had a big minus, and the voter approved. So that was offset with the long-term facilities maintenance bond. So it's, it's shifting basically from one category to the other.
Okay.
In the regular debt service fund.
Still somewhat of an uptick, though, on the...
Yeah, yeah.
Before I get back to any other board questions, I want to make sure there's nobody else from the public that would like to address during the public comment portion of this. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Can you just restate your name for the record, please?
Jennifer Kastrasky, two four eight five Gisella. I promise not to get choked up this time. This is just something that I noticed in my mailbox. I don't know if anyone else has gotten these. Did anybody get two? I'm just curious. These seem to be kind of fancy, glossy, lengthy documents about the annual update for our school. To me, I, I almost throw everything away that I get in the mail now that looks like this, because I'd much rather receive it in electronic format, and it seems to be kind of a waste of money to me. And then to get two was kind of right after the property tax statement and the levy and all the increases, then I was like, ugh. And now I have two of these. Now what am I going to do with these? So I figured I'd bring them to the meeting and just maybe make a suggestion, you know, printed literature, high-quality printed literature like this, you know, is inevitably all going to go in the trash. So maybe we could consider consolidating this, or having like a newsletter that says, hey, go to this website to read our annual update, and just have a one-page note, postcard, something like that, to save money. We're doing a lot of those things with the place that I work at for the state, and it seems to be really helping with waste and money and costs. So I don't know where you guys are at, but just thought I'd share. It was helpful for us.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, at this point, we'd like to close public comment and ask the board if there's any other questions regarding this item. C and none. We will move on to D three, which is a presentation of the audit report. Mr. Walt?
Yes. Each year, the school district has an annual audit of the prior year's budget, and we work with the auditing firm of MMKR. And tonight, Jim Eikten from MMKR will report on the district audit. Welcome, Jim Eikten.
Members of the board, sub-pretended, thanks for the introduction. My name is Jim Eikten with MMKR CPAs, here this evening to provide a presentation of the annual audit report of the district. It is a requirement in state law that the financial statements of the district be completed on an annual basis. That particular financial statement is then required to be audited by an independent certified public accountant. That is my role.
Excuse me one second, sir.
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Wazork, can you please take that out into the hallway? Thank you, sir. Sorry about that, sir.
No problem.
Thank you.
As I stated, the district did complete its annual financial statement. It is the role of the auditor to provide opinions on that financial statement, and then to complete the audit process in accordance with general accepting auditing standards, as well as the standards applied by the Minnesota Department of Education, as well as the Office of the State Auditor here in the state of Minnesota. We also issue what's called the management report as part of our audit process, which is the report that I provide that provides really a lot of documents and a lot of information on the results of the audit, in really a presentation format. And I'll be providing a few highlights in my presentation this evening that goes over that particular document. As I mentioned, I do provide opinions on the district's financial statements. The district does complete what's called a comprehensive annual financial report. That particular report is over a hundred pages long and provides a lot of information on the district's financial activities, as well as a lot of trend information on the overall results of the finances of the district. We do provide, as I mentioned, auditing of your internal controls of the organization, as well as your compliance with a variety of laws and regulations. The federal government does also require the district to provide what's called a single audit of federal awards. Anytime the district receives more than seven hundred fifty thousand dollars of revenue, you're, you're triggering a single audit of federal awards. So we, we apply federal guidelines in completing that particular audit. And then lastly, the Office of the State Auditor here in the state of Minnesota requires us to provide an audit of your compliance with state laws and regulations. They provide us with a list of laws that we audit. Not every law, just those on the list. So in my management report, I do provide a summary of the audit results for the year. The first and probably most important opinion that I provided was an opinion on the basic financial statements, the financial statements of the district. I did provide an unmodified opinion on those financial statements. An unmodified opinion was the opinion you were looking for, probably best classified as a clean opinion in that sense. In my report, I also provide an opinion that we did not have any findings on your internal controls or your compliance with financial reporting aspects of the overall organization. In my, I mentioned a single audit of federal awards. We did have one finding to report specifically on the requirements of the federal government that, as it relates to the major programs that we audited. In this year's single audit of federal awards, yes?
Yeah, excuse me. We do have some students actually in attendance here tonight.
Right.
And I think it might be good if you explain to them that no findings is a good thing.
No findings is a good thing. Yes, absolutely. As I get, as I get through the particular presentation, you'll find that this is the only finding that I have. We have one other comment and recommendation on this particular slide. So overall, the financial results from a compliance perspective are doing pretty well. So as I mentioned, the single audit of federal awards, we do audit only the major programs. Typically, the major programs that we audit are rotating. So the federal government provides us really a rotating list of the programs that we test. So typically, we, from one year to the next, we, we audit some of the major programs. In this particular year, we audited the child nutrition program. So as part of our audit, we are required to look at the controls over the child nutrition program. In one area, we noted in our finding that the district did not have proper internal controls over the compliance of verifying that your vendors are not suspended or debarred by the federal government. The federal government provides a list online of various vendors nationwide that are suspended or debarred from receiving federal aid. As part of our audit, we, we did look at the controls and found that the district's controls over verifying that they looked at the list and compared that to your vendors was not occurring. We did, in this particular finding, it is an area of emphasis to note that this is a control finding. So we found that the internal controls were not in place to verify that was happening. We also are then required to verify that, to determine that the district actually complied with the standard, and we found that you did actually comply. The district was not, they do not have any vendors that are suspended or debarred, as we looked at the various vendors that are in place. There is a very distinct difference there, in that really this is an internal control finding and not really a compliance finding, as we did not find compliance issues with this particular item. So moving on, in the Minnesota compliance area, we did audit your findings, your, we audited your compliance with Minnesota laws and regulations and found no findings. That's good. No findings is good. Lastly, in any audit report, we also want to provide other comments and recommendations to the district as things that come up during an audit. We spend almost six months going through this process, and we provide a lot of recommendations along the way. And one recommendation I did want to highlight as part of this audit process was the timeliness of the bank reconciliation process. During the particular school year, the district did have some turnover in the finance area, and as a result of that particular turnover, the bank reconciliation... and as a result of that particular turnover, the bank reconciliation process fell behind in terms of its timeliness. As an auditor, we feel that that's a very important aspect of your controls and that that particular process be done on a timely basis. We provided that recommendation as part of the process, which was probably months ago now, and the district is taking that very seriously and is working towards making sure that in the future, the bank reconciliation process is done timely. So as I mentioned in the financial report, it is, in my management report, it is important that the understanding of the board as it relates to these findings. In my opinion, an audit really is a learning process. We're here to improve the overall results of the district. As part of any audit process, we focus as an audit firm not so much on the findings but on the corrective action that's going to take place as a result of that. It is an expectation of my auditor and hopefully of this board and it is certainly of the administration that any findings are to be corrected by the next audit cycle. In my report, we are required to report on that particular area. Last year's audit, we had three findings in particular related to communications with private schools, Title I program eligibility as well as withholding affidavit processes. As part of our testing this year, we did not find that any findings in those particular areas. We found that the district followed the corrective action plan that was putting in last year and those findings went away. I would fully anticipate, given the meetings that I've had with the administration as well as other comments made as part of our communication, is that we would anticipate that this would happen again for those two findings that I referenced earlier. So in my audit report for this particular year, we also provide information on the financial results of the district. An audit really has two parts. The first part being how you're doing from a compliance perspective. I just went through those particular areas. And secondly, how you're doing from a financial perspective. In my management report, I do provide a lot of information on financial results, so I'll cover a couple of those particular graphs in this PowerPoint presentation. So the first graph I put up on the board talks about fund balances. So a very readily common ratio that both the state of Minnesota uses, the district actually uses it in policy, but it's very common to use fund balances as a percentage of expenditures in determining how well the district is doing from an equity perspective. On the graph you'll see in yellow is the percentage of fund balances statewide as it relates to operations. So if you add up every school district's fund balance and divide it by the overall operation, you'd get the yellow line, which is roughly 20% fund balance statewide. That particular fund balance has been flattening out over time as our economy has stabilized. The yellow graph is actually, excuse me, the red bar is showing the district's overall fund balance. If you look at that particular graph, in 2018, the fund balance as a percentage of expenditures is going down to the actual average. That was a planned approach as part of the district's finances over the last several years to get to that particular standard that we see in place on that particular graph. We also provide information on revenues and expenditures, particularly using revenues and expenditures on a per student basis. This particular graph both shows district information. It's a little difficult to see, but it also shows revenues on a seven-county metro area basis. In 2017, which is the first known comparable data, the district received revenues in the general fund of roughly $12,200. That compares to a statewide, excuse me, a seven-county metro area-wide data point of $12,800. So the district overall is receiving roughly, I don't know, $600 round number, less revenue per student than a comparable seven-county metro area student. A lot of factors come into that. Referendum is probably the main component of that, but there's a lot of calculations that relate to that particular number. Overall, the revenues of the district were, on a per student basis, were $14,024, which compares to a seven-county metro area total of $15,200. So the district is receiving less revenues than its average comparable district. You can see in 2018, some of the revenue categories did increase. In particular, the increase in the general education aid as well as special education aid stands out to us. In particular, those increases relate to some of the factors that have already been discussed this evening and that relates to increases in student population. We also then provide information on expenditures per student. One of the areas here that we tend to focus on when I look at this is, again, in the general fund, the district spends in 2017 about $12,100 per student, which compares almost identical to the average school district in the seven-county metro area of $12,170. You'll see at the bottom of 2017 that the district's total expenditures were $12,289, which is actually lower than the seven-county metro area total. Part of that particular analysis would be actually appropriate, given the less revenue that you're getting. On the earlier graph, I pointed out that you're getting less revenue on a total basis, thus you're spending less on a total basis. It seems appropriate. One other area to point out on this particular graph is the spending for debt service. You can see that the district's overall debt service expenditures were roughly $600 per student and the average debt service expenditures in the seven-county metro area were $1,300 per student. What that means to me as an auditor is the district's managing its overall debt service quite appropriately, given the dollars on a per student basis.
So I think in light of the previous tax levy presentation, I think this gives some more context to the debt that the district does have in place. And in fact, if we were to compare ourselves to the other 47 or 48 AMSD districts, we'd be on the very low end of that in terms of debt per student as a measure. So it gives some context to the district's overall debt.
Great point. So in my presentation, we also then provide information on individual fund presentation. A lot of data has been talked about this evening on financial activities, so I'll try to touch on the higher points. This particular presentation does give probably the best information of the overall general fund financial position. At the end of 2018, which is the year that I audited, the total fund balance did decline roughly $6 million, but most of that was in the assigned fund balance areas as well as areas that are restricted for particular purposes. At the end of the year, the total unassigned fund balance, which is the equity position of the district's general fund, was $12,400. The district does have a fund balance policy in place. The fund balance policy does guide this particular number in terms of what would be an appropriate level of fund balance, given the operations of the district. At the end of the year, the fund balance as a percentage of expenditures was 11%. This fund balance policy of the district states that the unassigned fund balance would be between 12.5 and 16.7% of budget. So that particular percentage does fall below the range that's put forth by the board in terms of fund balance. What that might mean to the district or as the board is, as administration continues to bring forth financial information and you're making financial decisions, you would use as a benchmark toward the policy that you have in terms of making future decisions.
So that conversation will continue at the work study in January when we discuss the revised budget for this year and then the projected budgets for the next three years. So that's where we'll hone in on that and make the necessary adjustments to bring that to that, into that range, 12 and a half to 16.7%. So there'll be more on that at the January work study meeting.
All right. One of the other graphs, I'm not going to touch on these significantly, but I think these are important. This particular graph in my presentation does show a trend line of the change in ADM. You can see the last five years, the district's had a very positive change in the overall student counts. I bring that forth to this particular presentation because districts in declining enrollment situations have added challenges when it comes to financial obligations. Given the increase in the ADMs, the district's in a good place in terms of trend lines with student populations. I do provide information on individual fund data. I believe the general fund revenues that are provided here were very close to expectations in terms of the overall budget. One area that's already been addressed this evening, but I'm going to reemphasize this particular item, is in the area of special education aid. The overall revenues of the district are increasing, given the increase in students but also the increase in aid, but not to the level that you might find your expenditures are increasing. In particular, the one area that stands out is the special education aid category. Given recent legislative changes, there's a cap in place when it comes to that particular funding category and that is putting significant constraints on the overall revenue increases, albeit your expenditures are increasing dramatically in that particular area. It is certainly a concern and it has been addressed earlier, the very first point this evening, talked about that.
Yeah, it's a theme.
But I think as an auditor, I want to reemphasize that.
Yeah, and just to give that a little more context, essentially, we're at a cap and so on a year-to-year basis, we're essentially not seeing much of an increase at all in special aid funding while our expenses are outpacing inflation by at least a multiple of two, probably three. And so that's, it's a real issue for us. Again, we mentioned earlier, our cross subsidy is in the neighborhood of $1,100 or $1,200 per student and I think there was a number shared, what was the state number, 700, 780? And so we're, this is an issue that's very real for us and it, I think we've managed it pretty well up to this point, but there's a, we're at a point now where, because we're now hitting, we've hit that cap and we're not seeing that additional revenue. There was a time when you could count on special aid revenue going up five or six percent a year. We're not seeing that. And so it's really impacting us. And again, we'll talk about that more. I know Lisa Orin is working with some other folks on creating language to be proposed at this next legislative session. There'll be a lot more on special education funding as we go forward because it's a real issue that's, that we're having to face now. So, and thank you, Jim, for letting me interrupt.
No problem. Supporting my presentation. That's excellent. So in my presentation, we also provide information on general fund expenditures. In the general fund expenditure area, I would suggest is probably the area that the district is most focused on. As we talked about this audit, these particular expenditures are growing beyond expectations of the district, both in the area of salaries and benefits in particular. Most of the categories that you see here that are growing are in the area of classroom or serving students. General education, regular instruction stands out. Certainly, special education stands out. Transportation are categories that are growing dramatically in the district. We've spent a number of time, I've spent quite a bit of time with the administration and their administration is very concerned with these particular areas and is spending a lot of time looking into the overall expenditures of the district and spending a dramatic amount of time, understanding them better and understanding these increases. This is a particular area as you're a growing district with these additional students that the district's administration is working towards, I won't say getting under control, but understanding them better and understanding how they can serve students better, given the constraints that they have in a number of areas. So I will move forward to other funds. The district does have other funds. I'll try not to talk about them too much. You can see your food service fund is doing quite well. The community service fund has adequate fund balance, but there was a planned spend down in that particular category that you're seeing in that area. Lastly, I want to touch on one other main component of the district's financial results and that is the self-insured health benefits fund. The district recently, probably like four or five years ago, actually 2015, established a self-insured medical plan. That particular medical plan has its own fund. I put this here. As you can see, that this particular fund does show a slight deficit in its operations. The financial results in this area are not surprising to me at all. The self-insured health benefits fund can go up and down dramatically depending on claims and really just experience that you're having with your employees. I do believe that it's important that the board is aware of this particular fund, is understanding its activities and its financial position as well. And you can see it did improve in 2018 by almost $730,000, but in 2017, there was a very significant deficit purely based on experience of the employees in that particular fund. So in summary, I did mention that the district did provide, or I did provide, an unmodified opinion on the district's financial statements. I mentioned the certificate of achievement in financial reporting. If you get an opportunity to read this particular document, there's a tremendous amount of detail regarding financial activities, but also some of the positive things that are happening at the independent school district. I did have one finding that I reported as well as one recommendation in the bank reconciliation area. We talked a little bit about the overall fund balances in detail. But lastly, the district's financial position is in, it is in a stable environment and the overall financial results are as, provide a stable financial position going forward for the district. With that, I'll open it up for any questions that you might have for me.
Questions regarding the audit? Mr. Chapman?
Just a quick question for you. As far as the comparison, ADM revenue and expenditures, I see that that's supplied by MDE as far as those averages. Do you know if those averages are, if that's showing the mean or the median of what kind of methodology they're using there as far as comparison?
They're using a total. So for instance, they'll take into total revenues of every district and the total ADMs of every district and then drive, and then dividing. So it wouldn't, it'd be more like an average.
So like, I mean, so like Minneapolis-St. Paul, those that are getting larger ADMs would be thrown into that mix?
Yes, they would.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Other questions regarding the audit? I know the approval's coming back on the agenda, but, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, we will move into D four, which is the first reading of several school board policies. So I'll just list all of them for the record and then we can open it up to questions. So the first reading of school board policy, 419, tobacco-free environment, 421, gifts to employees and school board members, 511, student fundraising, 530 immunization requirements, 707, transportation of public school students, 708, transportation of non-public school students, 720 vending machines, and 721, uniform grant guidance policy regarding federal revenue sources. Is there any questions regarding those policies? I know they've been a part of the packet and then you've had time to look at them. So is there any questions regarding those policies?
I just have a clarification question. If there's wording in it that's a little awkward but it doesn't affect the actual content of the policy, is that something we can address with Dr. Kazmercheck in the policy committee later or is that something I should bring up right now?
I think you should probably, go ahead. No, go ahead, Mr. Kent.
We might not agree.
Go ahead.
I would say if it's clerical, we could, we could deal with that if it doesn't change the content.
Yeah, it's just, they're just clerical, just words.
Okay.
Is that what you were going to say?
Yeah, pretty much.
Okay. I will save those for the next policy meeting then. Thank you.
Perfect. Anything else? So with that, we will pass those on to the next month's meeting. They'll come back before us. With that, we will go into our first operational item, which is E1, which is the action on the 2017-2018 audit report. Mr. Wald?
Thank you, Chair Mullen, members of the board, Dr. Kazmercheck and Ms. Pratt. Just a few moments ago, Mr. Eikten, the district's auditor from MMKR, gave a very thorough description of the district's audit. And so at this point, we are recommending that the board move to accept the audit for fiscal year 2018 as presented by Mr. Jim Eikten from MMKR, the district's independent auditor.
You've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Chapman, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Wilson. Any discussion regarding the item? Ms. Beloy.
I just have one possible recommendation. Is it possible to get this a couple days earlier?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments regarding the audit? With that, this will require a roll call vote, please.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Beloy?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Okay. We have adopted the audit. With that, we will move to operational item E2, which is the action on the certification of the 2018 payable, 2019 property tax levy. Mr. Wall.
Thank you. Earlier this evening, we completed our truth and taxation hearing for taxes payable in 2019. The total levy for 2019 represents a 13.78% increase compared to the total levy from the previous year. There were a number of reasons why that levy increased, and we reviewed those earlier this evening, including, most significantly, a scheduled debt payment for OPEB bonds. Other factors impacting the school property taxes are property valuation and classification, net tax capacity. There were some adjustments from prior year budgets, as well as an impact of increases in student enrollment. So the composite of the total levy is $43,905,116.27. Administration recommends that the board move to approve the certification of the final 2018 payable 2019 property tax levy in the amount of $43,905,116.27.
You heard the recommendation. Is there a motion to move the levy?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Ellison, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilson. Any discussion relating to the item?
Can I just ask a question? And with a number of speakers we had tonight, they were referring to the other levies part, and I don't have my property tax statement in front of me, but I know that that is not just a school district levy in that section on your property tax, but does anyone know what percent is the school part of that?
Well, it is broken down by school district.
Yeah, so when it lists each taxing jurisdiction, by school district, it lists board-approved, and then other levies. And so those are local board-approved levies, and that amount would be the school district amount in that part.
I need to look at my property tax.
And that includes the OPEB, the prior year adjustments.
Okay.
LTFM.
Thank you. I will look at my property tax statement tonight.
Yeah, me too.
Other questions, comments? I just, and I want to be respectful, and I respect everybody that came up and speak tonight, and understanding that. I just, I think there was a misunderstanding, so I just want to clarify that, is that the school board, this group up here, we don't actually create the value of the property that comes out of the county assessor's office, correct?
That is correct. Yep.
Okay.
Yep. County or, in some cases, city assessors determine the property value of each parcel.
No more questions, comments? This, too, will require a roll call vote.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Beloy?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Okay. We will move on to action item E3, and I've got to apologize upfront, because I know I'm going to chop this word up, I always do every year. So it's action on accepting the Brochus grant.
You got it.
Did I say that correctly, Mr. Wilson?
Yes, you did. Brochus.
Brochus. I just wanted to make sure. So with that, Dr. Kasmercheck, is that you?
That's me. Thank you, Chair Mullen, members of the board. White Bear Lake Area Educational Foundation has forwarded 11 Brochus teaching grants to me, with the request that these grants be formally accepted by the school board. As part of the process, prior to consideration of any proposal, the foundation reviews proposals with our administration, and we confirm that these proposals are consistent with our curriculum, and if technology is used, consistent with our technology plan. So again, we just have such a great educational foundation, and this is just another example of the great work they do in supporting our teachers. So just, again, just hats off to them, and we owe them a lot of gratitude.
So the recommended action is accept the 11 Brochus teaching grants from the White Bear Lake Area Educational Foundation, as shown in the attached materials, in a total amount of $23,855.28. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Wilson, a second by Ms. Fahy, it's getting late. This will require a roll call. Is there any discussion regarding the motion? Ms. Beloy.
I just wanted to point out that the total fund every year is $30,000, so almost $7,000 was left on the table, so there's lots of money that could have been given out. So for teachers and anybody else that's interested, make sure you submit for those grants.
Okay. Mr. Wilson.
And also, the foundation thoroughly, the common term these days is vets. All grant applications, they really, you know, they're looking for increased rigor in the classroom, and they really examine all of these grant proposals to make sure that there's a reasonable chance of that to occur before they approve them. So it really is a good program.
Seeing no more discussion, we will require a roll call vote.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Beloy?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to E4, which is the action on accepting Greater White Bear Lake Area Community Foundation grants. Dr. Kasmercheck.
Right, thank you, Chair Mullen, members of the board. Another foundation in our community, the Greater White Bear Lake Community Foundation, it's a relatively new organization. If you don't know much about them, I would encourage you to look them up online. This is, these are, this foundation supports all of the communities that are around White Bear Lake, that circle White Bear Lake. And I wanted to, one, we're accepting one of the grants, but I also wanted to highlight just a few of the other things, projects that they've approved that touch the district in some way. So the action you're taking tonight is on a grant in the amount of $1,600 for the purchase of computers for our IT career pathways program. But in addition, the Greater White Bear Lake Community Foundation funded grants to support Bear Power, H2O4 Life, junior achievement of the Upper Midwest to expand programming at Matoska, Lakeshore Players to support theater education in the pilot year of a partnership with Lake Air's Elementary, Solid Ground, a mentoring program, St. Catherine's University with a Head Lice program, and then White Bear Center for the Arts of the Right Now program that some of our high school students take part in. So again, a newer group that is doing great things among, not only in our school district, but our neighboring school districts as well.
Okay. We have a recommended action to accept the Greater White Bear Lake Area Community Foundation grant in the amount of $1,600 for the White Bear Lake Area Schools' career pathways. With that, is there a motion to accept the recommended action?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Chapman, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Dr. Newmaster, is there any discussion regarding the grant? Seeing none, this will require a roll call vote.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Beloy?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Fahy?
Aye.
Thank them both very much. With that, we will move to operational item E5, which is the approval of the 2019-2020 calendar. Ms. Paul.
Chair Mullen, Dr. Kasmercheck, Ms. Pratt, and members of the board. We've had a chance to review the draft calendar. We had one small change since the last time we presented the draft calendar to the public, which is that we've moved a professional development day to take place on Election Day next year. We feel it's a really good opportunity for civic activity with parents and students, and it also addresses some safety concerns that staff and families had about having elections on-site while students were in school. So we feel it was a good solution. Mr. Maurer, as I shared in our work study, had the opportunity to talk with other districts, and of the 22 responses that he had to community education directors across the area, the majority of them, I believe it was close to 17 of them, have moved or are moving in the same direction as well.
Okay. We have a, we have a recommended action to approve the 2019-2020 calendar, as recommended by the administration. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Ellison, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fahy. Is there any discussion regarding the calendar? I have something. I know that there's a lot of students in the audience. I'm assuming that most of them will probably graduate, but the ones that are watching the show think that, probably think that we should have a shorter summer break, and then more school, I'm sure that all of them want that, so, including mine. So I just wanted to make sure that I got that on the record.
Jump right on that.
With that, is there any more discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, they're not buying it.
I think they all want it, right? It's on. That'll wake them up in a real hurry. Okay. With that, all in favor of adopting the calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right, we have a calendar. Thank you very much. With that, we will move to operational item E6, action on school board policies. This is a second reading of, and I will just list the policies. Policy 418, drug-free and alcohol-free workplace, drug-free and alcohol-free school. Policy 427, workload limits for certain special education teachers. Policy 510, school activities. Policy 712, video surveillance other than on buses. Policy 720, vending machines. We have a first reading?
No, that was taken off.
It was taken off? Okay. So policy 720, vending machines, and then policy 903, visitors to school district property and facilities. This is a second reading. They've come, this is the second time they've come. Is there a motion to adopt the policies? We'll take them in one fell swoop.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Fahy, a second by Ms. Ellison. Are there any questions, comments regarding those policies? All those in favor of adopting those policies, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, we've got all those policies adopted. And our last agenda item is, we need to make a motion. The next agenda item is a closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D-05, subsection 3C. While in closed session, the board session, excuse me, the board will consider an offer to purchase property identified as PID number 1803121430002, located in the city of Hugo, county of Washington, state of Minnesota, and PID number 180312143001, and 190312112001, located in the city of Hugo, county of Washington, state of Minnesota. Pursuant to the law I have cited, I hereby ask for a motion and a second to go into closed session for the purpose of considering an offer to purchase real property.
So moved.
A motion by Ms. Beloy, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of accepting the motion? Say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Okay. The chair will reopen the meeting for a vote on item 7 after the discussion. Would you like to call us back into order? With that, I'm going to be real quick here. We are going to, on operation item E7, which is, the board will consider an offer to purchase property identified as PID number 180312143002, located in the city of Hugo, county of Washington, state of Minnesota, and PID 180312143001, and 190312112001, located in the city of Hugo, county of Washington, state of Minnesota. No, I understand what it said. I'm trying to figure out if I need to read all that, too. Pursuant to the law I have cited, I hereby, no, I don't want to do that. So there is a motion for the board to consider the property purchase, action on the land purchase agreements. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Chapman, a second by Mr. Wilson. This will require a roll call vote.
Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Beloy?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.